For Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-first, two thousand nineteen to order. At this time for our moment of silence, I just want to note the last Friday, I had the opportunity to be at the Light of Hope event breakfast. Though it's the CASAS, that's the court-appointed special advocates. You hear about kids, many kids throughout our community, some of the ones that we're working with through the juvenile assessment issues, but a lot of kids need someone to be an advocate. This is one way for anybody to be able to be an advocate, help them through some difficult situations. Many of us have, with our children, have helped navigate difficult situations. Well, CASAS helps kids who don't have someone to be able to navigate through those situations. So, let's give them kids kind of that light of hope that they might be able to see a pathway for themselves. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Dickman, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Tiffany, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Present.
Mattson.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. And again, I want to wish all of you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I again want to welcome you and all of those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or your mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as the committee, the whole meetings are recorded and available on the city of Davenport website for viewing. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those who are watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business. That portion of the meeting will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you all for being here. The first next part of our agenda, is there a city administrator update to see?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have three public hearings this evening. Our first is Public Works, and Alderman Dunn will conduct that public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three public hearings for Public Works this evening. I open the first public hearing on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Jersey Ridge Road patching project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2300 block of North Fairmont Street reconstruction project between the intersections of West Central Park Avenue and West Lombard Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open the third public hearing on the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Gaines Street and West Twenty-Eight and a Half Street resurfacing project from Western Avenue to West Thirty- Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed, and that concludes the public hearings for Public Works, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Again, for everyone, the public hearings opened it, let people know we're going to be talking about this. This will be in the agenda later on as well, wanted to give you an idea of how that all unfolds. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have some petitions and communication from the council members and myself. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things tonight. Just a reminder that Davenport students will be back in school on Monday, August twenty-sixth, and we'll all need to be on the lookout for students walking to and from schools mornings and afternoons, even outside the designated school speed limit zone. So I know we all want them to have a successful year, and we all will look out for them. Secondly, Davenport Parks and Recreation will host a showing of the movie Wonder at Van Deavere Park on Friday, August twenty-third, beginning at sunset. Childhood can be a tough time for kids who look different or feel different, and sometimes there is no crueler place than their school environment. With the school year beginning, this movie reminds us and our families that the importance of simply being kind and respecting what might be different. That's Wonder, Friday night at sunset at Van Deavere Park. And speaking of parks, our sixth party in the park will be tomorrow night at Slattery Park, forty-six twenty-nine Northwest Boulevard. There'll be food, fun, and entertainment from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Members of city staff and council will be on hand as well. Please join us. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. I just want to share as well, I want to again thank you for your hard work on all these initiatives, and again, the parties in the park, but many others. Also thanking you for working with me to work on the census, for the 2020 census. We'll hear more about that. That's very important for our city, our representation, and potentially federal funding. So thank you for that. A couple of very quick items. I just want to note, I had an opportunity to be at the Deere Harvester Works on Friday, and pretty impressive, West students, Davenport West students that were there, working in a program collaboratively with John Deere and other corporate entities. I think we understand, a post-secondary education is extremely important. For some, that means college; for others, it might be an apprenticeship program. And the stuff that these young, it happened to be men in this group, but there were some women in earlier group, earlier class, what they're learning is amazing. The amount of commitment that Deere and other manufacturers, I know I just heard that M.A. Ford is another one getting on board. There's a variety of the companies that are helping to develop wonderful careers. And I, when I talk to individuals in the past, it's not about getting a job, it's getting a career, and that's pretty exciting. So I want to congratulate all of them, and Deere and all the school district for their involvement. I also had a chance to meet Dr. Kobelski, the new superintendent for Davenport Schools. Will hear and get to talk to him more and more. He's only been here a few days, but I think we all need to get behind him and the district as they move to the next level in the district and the next session and generation of our district. And lastly, there was a meeting also on, I don't know, Friday, I think, it might have been Monday, now that I think about it, with the IDEA, IDEA, which is the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and Debbie Durham. She came to town because of the great work that we're doing, the amount of resources and incentives that the state's providing through us to various companies to bring a lot of the organizations here, and the fact that Davenport's doing such a great job. I want to thank Bruce, but the, all of the community planning and economic development staff for the work that they're doing. It's great to be recognized and see this development happening. So Alderman Ambrose, did you have something to add, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to thank you for being such a great representative to the city. You're always out there representing us and doing a great job, so thank you for that. I want to report, we had a great fourth ward meeting last week, and Lieutenant Small and Engineer Shad did a great job, but most of all, I want to thank the library. As usual, out of Fairmont, the staff does an incredible job setting up, and we're very thankful for it.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. We're going to move on to our action items for discussion. Our first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Rossen will lead that discussion, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Okay. All right, Your Honor, thank you. We have seven items on the agenda this evening. First item is third consideration, ordinance for case REZ nineteen dash zero eight, request to rezone thirty-eight seventy Rockingham Road from R four C, Single and Two-Family Central Residential District, to S O S, Special Open Space District. And this is in relation to the Fairmont Cemetery. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration, ordinance for case REZ nineteen dash zero nine, being the request of Mark Cross to rezone one hundred and forty-six point nine eight acres, more or less, of property located between River Drive and Telegraph Road, bounded roughly by Wisconsin Avenue and South Vermont Avenue to the east and west respectively from R one and R two Single Family Residential to S A G Agricultural District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration, ordinance vacating the excess right-of-way formerly part of Forest Grove Court in Sixth Ward. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a second consideration, ordinance for case ORD nineteen dash zero two, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend various sections of Title Seventeen of the Davenport City Code entitled zoning. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution setting forth a policy for notification for certain zoning applications. And before asking for public or council, I did note when I was reading the updated material that, for staff's benefit, on page one of the published notice, item number one still had four days referenced. And I believe based on what we had discussed last time, that should be seven, or is it still supposed to be four for that one item?
Thank you, Ryan Rustnack, Community Planning. That was the one item we decided to leave at.
At four?
Because that is the state requirement for published notice. That's the notice that goes in the paper.
Specifically for P and Z and zoning?
Yep, that is what's required by state law.
Okay.
What's not required by state law, obviously, is the mailed notice, as well as the mailed notice for neighborhood meetings. We did expand that to seven days.
But we could always increase the length of time to seven, as long as we're.
We could. We just obviously want to limit legal exposure.
Okay, was there a discussion about that yesterday?
Madam Chair, I think part of the reason was, is that we linked in the lead time on the mailed notices and the other notices. Because that's like, more likely to reach the people actually than the published.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll see what come. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? And I see a couple from council. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you. I'm still not understanding that. So why, Ryan, if you'd, we want seven days, we don't think four is enough. I mean, I still say we do seven days. I don't think four is enough. Ms. McGinnis made an argument last time, I think it's valid, so I, I want it to be seven days. Thank you.
All right. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for working on the resolution and the, you know, I'm pretty comfortable, I understand the published, because again, that is the, what's required, but who's going to read it? But the, but the seven days, what's important, and I think, and thank you for this, is that the seven days of mailing is in there. So I think getting it to people is the most important thing, and that was my issue last time. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Alderman Clul.
I too would like to stress my appreciation for CPED for working this resolution out. While it would have been my preference to have continued to, to maintain the standards that we'd previously set in the ordinance, in the ordinance, I understand that through the resolution, we're still going to be exceeding state requirements. That doesn't change, and the fact that we will be reducing perhaps frivolous lawsuits by doing that makes sense to me. It allows staff to do more important things with their time, so I appreciate the work done by CPED.
All right, thank you. Alderman Mattson, one more time?
Thanks for a second. And the wording, Mr. Warner, if you could confirm, the ordinance will have words that will reference item number five, that we're talking about the resolution next time, just if you could confirm that for the public.
Yes, that'll be an amendment for you next time, and it will say that anything that diminishes or takes away a means of communication or reduces its scope will require eight votes of the council to do so.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number six, resolution for case P eighteen dash zero five, being the request of Kerry Condon on behalf of Pine Partners LLC for a preliminary plat for a sixty-three lot subdivision located west of Division Street and north of West Fifty-Fifth Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number seven is resolution for case F nineteen dash zero six, being the request of Dolan's Fifty-Third Street L.C. for a final plat for a one-lot subdivision on two-point-eight-three acres located north of West Fifty-Third Street and east of Villa Drive. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, I'd ask Alderman Ambrose to set the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move all items to the consent agenda.
Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed, same sign? And back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen and Alderman Ambrose. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration, ordinance amending Schedule eleven of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Resident Parking Only by adding Twelfth Street in front of the residence at twenty-two fifteen East Twelfth Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance amending Schedule five of Chapter ten point nine six entitled Four Way Stop Intersections by Deleting Eastern Avenue at Elm Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I will just make a comment, that this is the intersection of Eastern and Elm where we have the railroad bridge that is out of commission, and because that bridge is out of commission, currently, there is not a need for a four-way stop there. In 2021, when that bridge is opened up again, there's been an agreement with the railroad, there's money set aside for that. When that bridge reopens, the four-way stop will come back. I know it's a very important intersection for that neighborhood there, so I wanted to make sure we mentioned that. Item number three is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Jason Gillen, Alternating Currents, two oh eight East River Drive, ten a.m. Friday, August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, to twelve a.m. Sunday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Closure Emerson Place from Perry Street to Pershing Avenue, noted that this will be voted on later on in the agenda. Bettendorf Presbyterian Church, Praise on the River, Leclerc Park, Sunday, September first, two thousand nineteen, four p.m. to seven p.m. Closure, Byderbeck Drive adjacent to Leclerc Park. Saint Paul the Apostle, Back-to-School Block Party, Saturday, September seventh, two thousand nineteen, twelve p.m. to eight-thirty p.m. Closure, East Rush Home Street between Arlington Avenue and Carey Avenue. Saint Ambrose University, Killer Bee, five K Run Walk, Saturday, September twenty-one, two thousand nineteen, six a.m. until race finishes. Closures, Lombard from Ripley to Lilly, Ripley from High to Dover Court, Dover Court from Ripley to Gaines, Scott from Dover Court to Lombard, Gaines from Dover Court to Lombard, Rush Home from Gaines to Lilly, Lilly from Rush Hold to Pleasant, Pleasant from Lilly to Warren, Warren from Pleasant to Spalding Boulevard, Spalding Boulevard from Warren to Berg Place, Berg Place from Lilly to Spalding Boulevard. J.C.'s of the Quad Cities, two thousand nineteen, Bruhaha, Leclerc Park, Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, twelve p.m. to five p.m. Closure, beginning at nine a.m. Friday, September twentieth, two thousand nineteen, for setup, Byderbeck Drive between Ripley Street and Harrison Street. Joshua Sherod, Quad Cities Marathon, Sunday, September twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, four-thirty a.m. to approximately twelve p.m. Closures, Byderbeck Drive from Marquette Street to Gaines Street, Gaines Street from Byderbeck Drive to River Drive, River Drive from Brown Street to Scott Street, Western Avenue from Second Street to River Drive, Southern Most Traffic Lane and Parking Lane on Second Street from Gaines to the Arsenal Bridge Onramp, Eastern Most Northbound Lane on Centennial Bridge with the second exit closed, Middle Road from Pineacre Avenue to City Limits, Eastmere Drive from Middle Road to City Limits. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of those items? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, those items will move on. Item number four is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Jason Gillen, Alternating Currents, two oh eight East River Drive, Friday, August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, five p.m. to eleven-thirty p.m., and Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, twelve p.m. to eleven-thirty p.m. Outdoor Music Band over fifty dBA. Note, this will be voted on later in the agenda. Bettendorf Presbyterian Church, Praise on the River, Leclerc Park, Sunday, September fifth, first, two thousand nineteen, four p.m. to seven p.m. Outdoor Music Performances over fifty dBA. Kilkenny's Pub, Just Chords Reunion, three hundred West Third Street, Friday, September sixth, two thousand nineteen, seven p.m. to one a.m. Outdoor Band over fifty dBA. Circle Tap, Danny Lynn Howell Band, thirteen forty-five West Locust Street, Friday, September sixth, two thousand nineteen, six p.m. to ten p.m. Outdoor Band over fifty dBA. Saint Paul the Apostle, Back-to-School Block Party, Saturday, September seventh, two thousand nineteen, twelve p.m. to eight-thirty p.m. Outdoor Music over fifty dBA. Dwayne Hodges, Community Party, Harrington Park, Saturday, September fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, one p.m. to seven p.m. Outdoor Music over fifty dBA. J.C.'s of the Quad Cities, two thousand nineteen, Bruhaha, Leclerc Park, Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, twelve p.m. to five p.m. Outdoor Music Performances over fifty dBA. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of those noise variances? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, item number four will move on. Item number five is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. All of the applications today are annual renewals, which we do not read, but they are listed in your packet for your reference. And I'll turn it over to Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
Need to give you a second to catch your breath there, I think.
I need, I'm going to take a big drink of water after this.
I'm going to do the very lengthy thing of saying, I'm going to place all items on the consent agenda.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes public safety. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much for Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dickman. Our third area is Public Works, and that will be discussed by Alderman Dunn, and I would assume he will set the agenda as well tonight in Alderman Condon's absence.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have ten items on the Public Works agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the acceptance for the construction of the Northwest Boulevard and Hillendale Road intersection improvement project completed by Hawkeye paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Jersey Ridge Road patching project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Vinstra and Kim Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for the survey and design of the nineteen-thirties Clean Water SRF project in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the twenty-three-hundred block of North Fairmont Street reconstruction project between West Central Park Avenue and West Lombard Street. And before I ask for any comment, could we have Public Works come up and give us a little overview of this project?
Brian Shad, Public Works. This project was a learning experience for us, unfortunately. What we found is Fairmont has too high a number of vehicles per day, and in addition to that, the soils underneath with the underground detention, we found it to be an expansive style soil, and it drove that rock down into it and caused our unintended, unintended speed bump. This project will remove all of that, take care of the subgrade underneath, place a, essentially, a liner underneath to keep that soil from becoming saturated again, rebuild a portion of the underground detention, and then cap that with a regular concrete pavement.
Thanks, Brian. Alderman Gripp. Oops, first, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I just wanted, I said this a little bit yesterday, but I wanted to reiterate it today. This, this project came about because we had a neighborhood in west Davenport that was experiencing high, high flow of water, you know, flooding, and they needed something to be done, and I applaud our Public Works Department and our city administration. You came up with a creative way to stop that flooding from happening in the neighborhood. And as we found out, it was very successful on game and a block over, with the lower amount of traffic, that road is holding up very well. But here, on Fairmount, with the traffic, it didn't quite hold up as well. And I also applaud you for recognizing that you tried something, and it didn't work, so, and you've heard the people in that neighborhood, and you're making it better. So, yes, it was a learning experience, but you're doing the right thing for the neighborhoods over there, and I want to make sure that we continue to do things like this, because it's the right thing to do, and it's the only way that you get better as a, as a city and a Public Works Department.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West Twenty-Eighth and a Half Street and Gaines Street resurfacing project from Western Avenue to West Thirty- Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thanks to getting this, it's, we've been, the neighbors been asking for a long time, and they're proud that you, you're getting after that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution to approve the Caterpillar Engine Number Two overhaul at the Water Pollution Control Plant to Altorfer Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the acceptance for the construction of the two thousand eighteen Bridge Maintenance Project completed by Minutum of Brooklyn, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the acceptance for the construction of the FY nineteen Sidewalk Program completed by Kelly Construction of Davenport Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the purchase of a pro-patch truck from Houston Freightliner of Houston, Texas, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number ten is motion to approve the change orders three, four, and five for the Davenport Spur Extension and interchange track to Langman Construction in the amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Dickman.
I just wanted to thank staff for adding this to the agenda, because even though technically, separately, they, not all of them would have had to be on the agenda, I think it's really important for transparency that we include it like you did. So, just a quick shout-out, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson.
I agree, I just want to say, say thanks, so everybody knows this was the total of all those change projects, but making sure everybody's aware. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Alderman Mattson, would you set the agenda, please?
I recommend I make a motion for all items to go to consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That concludes Public Works, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Mattson. Our last area to be discussed is finance, and Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Clul will set the agenda.
Thank you. Item number one to be discussed on finance is a resolution accepting the annual burn justice assistance grant from the federal government for twenty nineteen to twenty-twenty in the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars to be voted on later on the, in the agenda, on this agenda. of $86,541 to be voted on later on the, in the agenda, on this agenda. Is there anyone from the public like to discuss? Council? Very good. Item two is a resolution accepting 2019, 2023, year three of three, AmeriCorps program grant from the Corporation for National and Community Services in the amount of $531,434. Again, to be voted on later on in this agenda. Anyone from the public like to discuss? Council? Very good. Number three is a motion authorizing the city administrator to sign an automatic aid agreement between the city of Davenport and the city of Bettendorf for fire protection services. And before I ask Chief or Ms. Spiegel, whoever, just a quick understanding of what we're doing to help each other out.
Hello, Mike Carleton Fire Chief. This is a sharing of resources between Davenport and Bettendorf. This is only for confirmed structure fires, so if there's a fire in either community, we'll send a rig from either one of the other community to help out. Historically, we looked at the data, probably 20 to 25 times a year, this would occur.
And we help each other out normally, anyway.
We help each other all the time already. Right now, we have mutual aid agreements, which are agreements, if you ask for help, we'll be happy to come over. This will be, both units will respond at the same time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief. Anyone from the public? Council? Very good. Number four is a motion approving the purchase of new Adler Theater Soft Goods Stage Drape Replacement to Rosebrand Wipers Company of Secaucus, New Jersey in the amount of $60,597. Anyone from the public? Council? And the last item, motion awarding a contract for the Housing Needs Assessment to Western Economic Services LLC of Portland, Oregon, in the amount not to exceed $55,000. Anyone from the public like to comment? Council? Very good. And then, of course, you see the purchases of 10,000 to 50,000. We always put them there, so you're aware of those, but we don't read them. I'll ask Alderman Clul if you'd recommend an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that all items be moved forward to consent agenda with the exceptions of one and two, which will be voted on later in this meeting.
Okay. There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much to Alderman Mattson and Alderman Clul. We have this area of other ordinance resolutions and motions. First of all, I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules to vote on some of our following items. It is moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you, and as noted by my colleagues earlier in the meeting, one is the resolution closing various streets, lanes, public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. That's Jason Gilliland, Alternating Currents, 208 East River Drive, 10 a.m. Friday, August 23rd, 2019, 12 a.m. Sunday, August 25th, 2019. Closure of Emerson Place to Perry Street to Pershing Avenue. Again, is there any public with business plug with comments on this? Seeing none, any Alderman with comments? Will an Alderman move the resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, and I see no other discussion items. Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and that resolution is adopted. Our next item is a resolution accepting the 2019, 2020, which is year three of three, AmeriCorps program grant for the Corporation for National and Community Services in the amount of $531,434. Is there any public with comments on this item? Seeing none, is there, will an Alderman move the resolution? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
And that resolution is adopted. Our last item under the suspended rules is a motion approving the following noise variance request on the listed dates and times. Jason Gilliland, Alternating Currents, 208 East River Drive, Friday, August 23rd, 2019, 5:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., and Saturday, August 24th, 2019, 12:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Outdoor music band over 50 dB A. Are there any public with comments on this item? Will an Alderman move the, move the motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Tiffany, would you call the roll, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and that motion is passed. Again, I asked, are there any public with businesses this evening?
Donald Stevens Jr., multi, most of my life, years of being a Davenport resident. I would like to direct that our mayor of the city of Davenport and the city council to urge those that watch at home and listen to really seriously not allow for people to wave them on in a turn. What had happened on June 9th, while I was driving westbound on 53rd Street, a lady had turned after allowing herself to be waved on by somebody at speed. I hit this lady because I did not see her turning until I hit her. And I have been going through physical therapy, occupational therapy. My thumb on my left hand is where it's not functioning like it should. I have an injury to my left foot and ankle. My back is injured, as well as my neck. And I, I think that these type of situations are highly avoidable, and it happens way too often. I've talked with a couple of people I know that are city bus drivers, and they wave people on all the time, and I mean, these are big vehicles. It's kind of hard for someone to see through those type of vehicles or any other kind of vehicle. It's dangerous. Glad all that was is the injuries that we incurred, all four people in my vehicle and the people in that lady's vehicle. Our vehicle was totaled out. Her vehicle, probably all it needed was a front fender, but, you know, we're still dealing with medical care, and I'm dealing with that all the way up through the ninth, the next month, which will be exactly three months to the day from the day of the accident. I, I think that coming to this council and asking that you guys really press at the citizens how important it is for their safety and others not to let others wave them on to turn when you can't see whether you're clear to turn, you should not turn. I, I just have to say that. I'd hate to see someone get more seriously injured or killed because someone allows themselves to be waved on. I thank you.
Thank you. And again, as we mentioned, this is a session where it's a listening session for us. We don't respond, we just take this and, and listen to your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Brian Winger, I, I don't live in Davenport anymore. I've been following the Civil Rights Commission thing for well about a year now. I know most of you have Facebook, and, you know, I see your faces on there all the time, so I know most of you have it. You know, I've seen in my memories that it came up that this has been going on just about a year now. And some things have come to light recently on it that, you know, I would like to speak on. First, I want to read something, though. And how did your signature get on page four of the letter? I have no idea. Okay, do you have what's called, do you have a robo-signature? I do not. Okay, well, take a look at page four of the letter, the last page. Yes. Do you see the signature on there? I do. Okay, you told me that you didn't sign this letter, correct? That's correct. And who do you think signed the letter on your behalf? I don't know. This looks like my signature from a previous letter. Okay. That was sent identifying something, I don't remember, but... So could somebody have copied your signature and put it on the letter? They could have, I suppose. And you're telling me that you don't have a robo-signature that you have stored in city council office? I do not. That could have been used. I do not. So this is an excerpt from one of the current favorite readings that I have, and that I've been checking out and posting on Facebook periodically. And a lot of it talks of, you know, how a signature got on a, got on a document that was sent to the press and different things like that. And some of the press like to use, you know, words like the, the signature was applied to the, to the thing rather than forgery. And, you know, I, I think to myself, man, as a citizen, if I, if I was going to sign something online and I used somebody else's signature like on a, on a virtual check or something like that, they would come arrest me for forgery, I believe, not applying a signature to something. You know, I don't think that's, I don't think applying a signature to something's a crime. I know forgery is. I know if I did that to a check online or something, a document online, I would be coming and getting arrested. I also know that when, you know, working in an office situation, when you use things that have signatures on it and different things like that, that when you, when you agree to use that, that technology and everything, you also agree not to apply somebody else's signature. And, you know, when you, when you agree to use that stuff and you, you say, yeah, I'm going to use that and I'm not going to apply somebody else's signature, that means you're liable for, for legal, you know, legal things that come back on you when you break that. You understand that, right? Everybody understands that here? So anyway, what's been put out in the press and everything like that, and what I understand is nobody is doing nothing. I called the county attorney, he said he can't do nothing, he said he doesn't investigate stuff like that, I don't understand why. He said that, that somebody would have to report it to the police, you know, that the person that did this deposition would have to report it to the police in order for an investigation to be started. I hope it does, because, you know, from what this tells me is that, you know, there was forgery done by, you know, certain people on the city council, mayor, whoever. Also, there was also backdoor meetings, you know, backroom meetings that aren't supposed to be done by the city council. City council's supposed to be transparent, you're supposed to let everybody know what you're doing. If you're having a meeting in the back room and nobody's around, how does that happen? Right, you can't answer me. Anyway, in short, somebody needs to do something, right? I, I think so, I think so, and I hope they do. I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Foley, Fourth Ward. I'd also like to speak about the Civil Rights Commission. I spoke at a meeting a few months ago about the same issue, and nothing has really been resolved since then. This whole thing has been a giant debacle. It's been a giant waste of time and money and, and effort, and it's clear that processes were not followed, and now it sounds like laws may have been broken. Since we cannot have a do-over and go back and redo the, and follow the processes and laws correctly, we're here now in this position, and these allegations and, and processes need to be resolved and they need to be investigated so that we get a good outcome out of this mess.
My name is Camilia Paul, I live in the First Ward. Since this old Civil Rights Commission thing has been started, I think it's pretty clear that it has costed our city much more money than it would, would have if you guys would have just left it alone and left, well, things being, well left alone. I'm kind of disappointed that none of you has called out anybody on this, and especially the letter that was sent to the people on the former Civil Rights Commission. As a taxpayer, it concerns me that we're moving forward to a court case because somebody did something that shouldn't have happened to a lady of distinguished behavior, Nicole Berbiasko. I think whoever's in charge of this Civil Rights Commission debacle should resign, and I do believe we need to stop having backdoor meetings. As a taxpayer, this is not fair to us taxpayers. Everything's supposed to be through the open door policy here, if I'm not correct. Sorry, but I guess I'll have to run for office. Some people need to resign, and clearly that has been put this forward is hurting the people of the Quad City, or excuse me, of the Quad Cities, because the Civil Rights Commission also protects people in the Scott County area. So with that being said, it is state law that we are to have a Civil Rights Commission, and we should have a budget for that. And I don't know what's going on behind backdoors and what you guys are trying to do to that budget, but it needs to stop here and now.
Loura Rodriguez, I'm with the Quad Cities DSA as well as the Quad Cities Intersectional Action Network. This is also a comment on the Civil Rights Commission. I just recently attended a meeting where there was no quorum for that meeting, and nothing was done for another month. This drags on. People came to the last meeting, one of them had said last month that his case had drawn out for two years, two years, waiting for a resolution on something that could have been in the pipeline, could have been worked on. It's my understanding that this is all costing taxpayers a significant amount of money. It's costing people frustration, and, you know, when you deal with things like housing and job play, you know, workplace discrimination, this could, this is people's lives that you're messing with here. This isn't like a joke, this is like people's actual lives outside of, you know, city hall, outside of politics. They're just trying to get by, and y'all are playing games with their lives. So what's frustrating for me after reading the deposition that Brian had mentioned there, a crime has clearly been committed. Every time you sign like an e-sign, you know, document, you have to read an entire page of the repercussions for lying or committing forgery at all. It looks to me like somebody sitting up there really needs to tell the police department that a crime has been committed if they really feel that's true. Grow a spine, get a backbone, because the people of Davenport deserve that kind of leadership, especially, for instance, if you were running for mayor. It's clear to me that, you know, it's going to be a very contentious fall as, you know, the election season approaches. I sincerely hope that you all are paying attention. I haven't seen any of you at the city, you know, Civil Rights Commission meetings, I'd love to see you there. It sounds to me like there's a clear agenda, a personal agenda perhaps, against the director of the commission.
Criminal conspiracy.
Some kind of criminal conspiracy. And, and, you know, it's just really embarrassing. I went to the DSA convention this year, the Democratic Socialists of America are kind of having a moment, you know, 50,000 people plus. Of the thousand people that I met, the thing that people know about the Quad Cities is this. This is, you know, national news, people know about this. It's humiliating to have to explain what's going on in our city. I, yes, I consider it my city, even though I live in Moline. The Quad Cities is small enough that we all belong to each other, we all hold each other accountable, and frankly, something needs to be done. I sincerely hope that our, you know, leadership here is strong enough and bold enough to speak truth to power, to go to the police and, you know, explain what had happened, and perhaps get something going here in terms of justice for the people of Davenport and Quad Cities in general.